Okay, so I am going to call our meeting to order at 6:02 PM. And we will open it up to public comments. If anybody comes in, oh, I missed that one. We will leave it open. And just let us know if you have any comments or questions or all the things. Okay, so thank you. That's everything.
Yes.
There you go. I think we got them all.
Awesome.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna then, uh, can we do minutes and then we'll...
That's okay.
Okay. So we'll start with the other minutes and then we'll go into business. So we'll start with the March 7th minutes. Did anybody have? I did not see anything in any of the minutes.
I'm gonna make sure I have. I didn't print it out because it was...
Take your time. I know it was like seventy. Yeah, I only printed...
It was seventy.
I only printed portions of it.
But the minutes, uh, was it in the second half or the first half?
Right, in the first.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Yes, no? This was the very short, efficient?
Nope.
Nope, this was the one prior where, um, uh...
To last board meeting with Jackie.
Yeah, TCA, um, talked about, uh, social emotional learning and, um, character strong.
Got it. Although the minutes are nice and efficient.
They are. Yes. Um, so if you don't have anything, I will make a motion to approve the March 7th meeting minutes.
A second.
I abstained, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention. Okay. So then the April 4th was our super duper, your 4 slash 11th meeting. Super duper best.
The only thing I have is the formatting on 1 and 2, but other than that, it's...
The format?
Up here.
Oh, it just like, there was an indentation.
Yes. Nothing. I have no...
I didn't see anything.
Concrete changes.
Okay. Um, so Amika motion to approve the April 4th slash 11th board vote minutes.
I'm seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Cool. Well, you're up.
All right, thank you for starting the financials now. I hope everyone's printed out okay, because I realize mine printed out terrible. Um, but it's free.
It's fine.
Okay, good. Um, so this is our first go around with the new accounting software, so apologies for it not being the board fact, but we wanted to really make sure we had accuracy of the reports as we learn more about the system. So we did just have a few changes from last month. We had some substitutes, but we don't typically encumber for subs, that just happens, uh, each month. The aid salary is showing a little bit down. Um, we are double checking on the two snow days and how those encumbrances are playing through the system, so it might show a little bit light falsely because of the two snow days that aren't in there, but we are still double checking on that. But what happened in the new system is it's recalculating everyone's days for the days remaining. So the system, it calculates for days remaining and we're just double checking on the two snow days that we had, how it's encumbering, because if everybody's on a work calendar in the old system, it would've counted the number of days. Where in the new system, it's tied to a calendar, so if we had the last day on like the 12th and now it's the 14th, we're just double checking that those two days are encumbered correctly. So you might see a little swing between what's encumbered here and next month.
Yep, okay.
But, um, we're just double checking that because it recalculated everyone's days remaining.
Ooh, that's fun.
Yeah. Um, and then we had some special ed, um, contracted services and we had a little bit of encumbrance adjustments for the psych and OT. And then this time of year is when we start closing out a lot of purchase orders, so you'll see in technology, there was a purchase order that was closed out that was not as much as expected. So did anyone have any questions? There weren't really any changes on the revenue side? So it was just a decrease of 1,100 and, or sorry, 1,880.
Now, in the details, there's a lot of negative balance for equipment. What's that stemming from? Furniture and fixtures and equipment.
Can you tell us what page you're on?
Uh, I'm on page one.
Okay, thank you.
It's gonna take a minute to get you to this one.
Yeah, and this is the, this format is very similar. You'll, you'll, if you remember the older report, the subcap, the subtitles were bolded here. They're not bolded, so it's a little bit harder to see.
Yeah, and it's not easy to find out that, it's like in the first big gap.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see where you're going.
There you go. So there's a $26,000 negative balance on one.
So that's the total for that whole section.
Yep, okay.
So that 26,000, see how it goes across function, regular education? That 26,000 is actually the total of that full 1,100 section.
Ah-ha, so it is not the total of equipment, it is the total of the section.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
So I, I am going to ask, because it was actually something that came up from Brentwood, asking if we could bold the sub, sub, um...
That would be really helpful.
That would be really helpful. I just need to talk to development to see how that...
Either that or somehow separate it out so we know what it is.
Yeah.
Because it just looked like a...
Equipment, yeah, that's, you're right.
Yeah, I can see, I can see the confusion there.
So we can work through and try to bold that or do something different.
All right, now I'm gonna have to like rethink all of my questions.
Well, maybe they're turned into non-questions, right?
You wanted to know why there was so much on furniture, so much on...
Yeah.
Right, I was like, that's a lot of furniture in here, what's going on?
Why don't we buy it?
Yeah, I'm glad it was nothing, which is great. Well, not nothing, but... No, nothing's screaming out at me.
What about the transportation, special ed transportation? That is right.
I think that's...
On page three.
I think if you look at the big pack that you signed, there might be an explanation to that. For sending a student out.
So is that, that's definitely new then from...
So it wouldn't have been a change since last month.
Oh, okay.
So, but it might have been encumbered.
Oh, okay.
So as soon as we know about a need, we encumber for the need.
Got it.
And then we pay against it. So you might have seen an invoice for transportation, but we would've encumbered it in months prior.
Got it, okay, that makes sense to me.
And I was making an assumption that that will end up reflecting in future that specific encumbrance will continue to be seen from moving forward.
Year over year, you mean?
Um, maybe, maybe not.
It would depend on the age.
Right. Yeah, that's, you know what I'm talking about.
I do.
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Potentially could be, potentially could not be, but I'm sure it is being reevaluated as needed.
That's right, correct.
Okay. Thank you, that's what I was asking.
And if you think of any questions after the fact, feel free to email me as well.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't...
Um, another question is if, is this a potential to draw upon any of the trust funds? Okay.
For special education?
Yes.
We wouldn't do that till the end if we needed to, right?
We don't need to do it at the end, we can do it at any time.
No, I know, but when, last year, because we did draw out, we waited to make sure, because we may have, we may have had it.
Right, if we still have the funds available in the current budget, we wouldn't need to draw out of the trust.
Right.
And also, is this something that is, was completely unanticipated? Yes, it was unanticipated and we still have enough funds within the budget to cover.
As of right now.
Mm-hmm.
Is there enough funds in the budget on that line item?
After questions?
Well, on the line item, that's, specific line is encumbered to be overdrawn, so, um...
Maybe that's something to look into for next meeting?
So I guess, what is it they want to look into? So that particular line item, yes, is scheduled to be overspent.
As far as special education.
Yep.
Yeah, but the overall bottom line of the budget, which is the voted appropriation, is relevant.
What I'm asking for, what is the trigger for that? Is it appropriate to draw upon a special ed trust fund if there was enough money in there to do that? And is that something that...
So that would be completely the board's decision. So, I mean, there is plenty of money in the bottom line to support that overspend.
Okay.
Because there's other areas that are underspent. If you were in a situation where you would go over your appropriation, then absolutely I would say, yes, you need to draw down on the special trust fund.
So in the future meetings, whether it's going to be the remainder of this school year or the beginning of next year, we need to keep an eyeball on that so that we make sure that that fund, if we need to pull against that fund, we do it at an appropriate time. Okay.
Yeah, and you can do it at any point in time if there's a need for it.
Not right, we don't need to, do we need to do it now?
I wouldn't say you need to do it, because if you look at the remaining expense is $62,000.
Yep.
And you might not have that in future years if something different happens in the bill.
Oh, I know.
So I, I personally think just trust funds is rainy day funds and wouldn't use it if you didn't have to.
Well, the standard practice is to use it when you don't have enough in your overall budget to cover an unanticipated expense.
I mean, yes and no, I mean, it's really up to the board's choice. If you, if it's gonna draw down the regular budget to $10 and you still have enough, the board might make the decision to utilize some of the trust fund.
And I think it would be, it would depend on how much we currently had in the trust fund too. I mean, I know our special ed, we would still like to see, I think it's like 100,000 more in that. So if we have the cushion in the regular budget, I would prefer to not pull. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, the only other thing I would point out, and I'm sure we're all aware of this, is the projected ending on the signed fund is, right now, 89.
With the revenue, yeah.
With the revenue. Um, and, uh, the anticipated potential money being taken at the end of the school year to go to the trust funds is 40,000 this year.
Correct.
And so, to Jane's point, we have, there's a board meeting next month.
Yep.
That if for some reason there was some wildly new purchase or, or issue with, with, um, our budget, we could make that decision to pull it if we needed to.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so it is completely a board's decision. This was an unanticipated special education cost, so yes, it could qualify.
Yeah, I just want to keep an eyeball on it as we think through these for the future. Thank you.
Um, can I ask a question? Uh, for, because I love this dashboard, I love being able to see a snapshot. Is there, so I did reach out, um, totally separate, but I did, after last meeting, um, Jane had asked about impact fees. Would, because there's not really a place that we keep track of that, except to just randomly go out and ask, who, how much do we have? Is that, um, something we could put on this, um, to keep track of so we're aware of it as part of our dashboard?
Yeah, we, I mean, we could, um...
She gave me the numbers. So that's because, specifically because some of them expire and we want to make sure we're using them.
Which we used, I believe, all the ones that were going to expire.
Last year, yes. Um, there's 9,825 that needs to be used by the end of this year year, like December.
Okay.
And there's 39,300 total available in the fund. So I just, there's not, except for reaching out to her, I was, I was, I don't know how other...
So we would have to reach out to her.
This is a town thing.
Yeah, I could reach out to her and have her touch base with her monthly to see what the balance is.
I don't wanna like, I just was thinking, like, it's, it's something that comes up quite frequently, so I thought it would be nice to have like some sort of visual on it.
Ongoing snapshot.
An ongoing snapshot of it, so that we don't lose the opportunity and we're personally aware, maybe, I don't know.
I can, I can touch base with her periodically, whether monthly or every other month.
She'll reply back to me like, super fast.
To get the balance, which is awesome.
She's amazing.
And then the one thing that we will want to, um, keep in mind, so Gordon Graham, our school district attorney, at one of our NASBO meetings, the school business, he, his suggestion is to not record that as a planned revenue and really use that as more of like your trust funds. And that way you're not draining it every year. That was his suggestion going forward, but I can definitely put it...
It's on the expiration, I think, to your point.
Yeah, it's more of like watching the expiration.
Yeah.
That, that was, like, this year it's not as big, but, um, like last year was, so...
Yeah, the 19650, I believe those were expiring.
They were expiring in December.
This coming December?
They are, they did, we spent it before last December.
Okay, that's what it was? Because those were the ones that was expiring, we used, we drained as much as we could for that.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, that's what it was, okay.
And then this 9,825 is due to expire in December of this year.
This year, gotcha, okay.
But there's a total in the whole fund of 39,300.
Okay. And I will also double check with her because there's...
I can forward this to you too.
Oh, yeah, if you forward it, awesome, because there's also impact fees, and I just want to make sure she was clear, there's Newfields Elementary and Cooperative, and they have to be different. Um, and so sometimes when the town talks impact fees, they lump them together.
Okay, yeah.
But it has to be different.
She's usually, I think she...
It's you asking, I think she knows, but that's a good point.
Yeah, that is a good point. So, yeah, maybe if you, if you don't mind clarifying, I would love if you, it's on your radar or our radar.
Yeah, I can reach out to a student, not a problem. Um, but what, what I'm gonna put on your report is only the Newfields Elementary, um, because the cooperative would have to use the cooperative ones.
Correct. Thank you. I just don't want it to not get spent.
Yeah, that's a good call, John.
Yeah, and that's exactly why we did what we did for the, um, the survey, or not survey, the architectural plan.
Thank you. I can spell, I swear.
The architectural plan for, uh, the safety project.
The survey.
The survey.
Yeah, architectural might not have been the right word.
Not the word, the survey.
This, yeah. Sorry.
So that was what, 19?
It was 19650 that we got back in.
This is what, looking at April?
Yep.
That we got back in impact fees.
Was that...
That's what we spent.
You see right here?
Yep, I got it.
Yeah.
Um, is any of that project reflected in any of these line items?
No.
Uh, no, the, the expense would be in these line items because we're, we count the revenue. We're, we're, I believe it would be in the 2,600 section, because that is the main section.
So it'd be 19650 I'm looking for?
It might have... I can definitely check to see where it was reflected in here.
It would've been in and then out.
Well, it would still show as an expense, it would show as an expense in here.
Let's see if they might have reflected up.
What was the name of that company again?
TF.
Moran.
Moran, yes. So I can...
Elementary arts school teachers.
Yeah, I'm looking to see...
Doesn't look like it's in here. I don't see anything for that amount, but was that the only expenditure for that project?
It would've, it would've been on a line with other things.
Other thing, yeah, that's what I was...
So I'm just pulling up the old system. And we can run a quick vendor history to tell us what line it got charged to.
Would've shown up on last month as a reported period.
No, it was a long time ago. Yeah, it was in the fall. Yeah, it was back in November.
Before it expired, because that, that amount expired in December.
Yeah.
The month that we used.
So I'm just trying to find the line that was charged to. So, um, 26,250, 250, 430. So, all right, so it's on the 26, 250, 430, so if you see, um, to, you're, in the year-to-date column, there's 56,883 dollars and 32 cents. It's repair and maintenance is where it...
Oh, you said 56?
Yeah, so you have to look in the year-to-date column, so it's, uh, 11, 26, 20, 50, 430, and then a bunch of zeros, and it's called the repair and maintenance. The line item for the year had a budget of 60,000 and it, the year-to-date actual is 56,883.
Okay, so go back, what'd you say? I'm sorry, I wasn't... So it's under repair and maintenance?
Yeah, so it's, the line item's 11, 26, 20, 50, 430, called repair and maintenance. The budget for the year is 60,000 and the year-to-date actual is 56,883 dollars and 32 cents. And that amount of money that we spent on TF Moran, or Moran, is part of the 56,883. But that's why on the bottom section here, I have it as a revenue, because it comes in to offset that expense. But because we spent it, we have to show it as an expenditure.
Um, and the revenue shows up as...
It's a...
In the budget?
So revenue's not part of the budget, it's on this report here, so down here.
No, I didn't, I understand, but in this line item, the expense is on the line item, but it's not part of what the budget is in that line item.
So when Suzie put together the budget, it would not have been part of the, what was part of the budget?
And that is part of, the 60 grand is the original budget?
Yes.
Okay. And then where does this 19,000 revenue show up?
So what you're looking at is just an expenditure report, that line-by-line detail.
So this is not gonna show up in this...
No, that's not, that does not contain any revenue. That's just to show how you're doing against your appropriation. So on this summary report, in the green down here, it's not green on my sheet, but, um, that's where your revenue is different than planned, whether it's higher or lower. And so your fund balance is your combination of expense less than planned and your revenue more than planned to equal your fund balance, which is in the calculation in the upper right-hand corner.
Thank you for signing that.
No problem.
I feel like I ask it at every once.
Are there any other expenses from that project?
No.
I'm, I'm not nowhere, honey.
Anything else on the budget or...
How does the plan look?
How does that look?
No, of, of the next six weeks of school, I'm sure it'll be lovely.
I think we have everything encumbered, so when we went to the new system, we actually had to rebuild all purchase orders, so we took real, hard to scrub at everything. Um, as well as this time of year, we like, typically we stay the tribe, all your purchasing done before April vacation. Though I say, I know kids are unpredictable, so there might be needs.
Sure.
Um, but we said to have it by May 10th, I think, is that this Friday? Um, to have, have most of the purchasing in, so I think everything that we know should be encumbered at this point in time. Unless Suzie knows something that I don't. But that's a nine.
Okay.
All right, anything else from Molly? Get out of here, get out of here. I watch your kids game.
You guys, the fields are buggy.
Yeah, they are.
I'm so glad.
I think I have some box frame, I'll chuck it.
I, I have some in my car, I'm actually gonna go get it.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'll get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fun to box frame.
Yeah, that reason is so many tucks.
And sunscreen, I finally made it in.
Okay, um, so next, um, is committee assignments. Bobby doesn't want it anymore.
No, I do.
I'm just kidding.
I have to say, I know, I, I, I'm laughing because Heather, uh, at our joint board, asked for my reassurances that I would continue, and I, I actually am happy to, if that works, cool.
It's such a great team.
Well, that's good.
We go to those personalities.
Okay, so we have the policy committee, the superintendent evaluation committee, the communications, which we need to take that off.
Right, we'll take that off.
Sorry, that's, because that's...
I don't think we ever had the conversation that it was officially done at the board meeting.
We, I know, we did at the joint board night at this meeting, so we can take that off going forward. Um, and then we have safety and security. So I'm also happy to stay on safety and security only because I know it meets during the day, which is hard for everybody, so I don't mind.
It's actually not that, I can move as much as I need to around, I have a lovely schedule. What are the, um, when does each meet?
Yeah, when, when does policy?
Policy is the third, oh, Thursday at 6:00 to 7:30, and there is a remote attend option, which I...
What is the frequency?
Uh, once, once a month, third Thursday, second Thursday.
That's correct.
For now, we were talking about possibly, um, making it potentially less frequent.
Yes. Okay.
But that's correct.
And then safety and security is quarterly?
It's quarterly, so the next one's not until October. Maybe late September, it kind of depends on like the school schedule. I still will, um, assign that in early, like, end of August, early September.
And the superintendent evaluation is...
It's usually, um, usually monthly, but there are some months where it's not needed. So I think at the beginning of the year, Allison, who's the chair this year, scheduled them out once a month. There were some virtual, there were some in-person, um, and then there were a couple of meetings where we came upon that month and were like, we really don't need to meet, and so it was just canceled. But it was able to be on everybody's account.
If you don't mind, I would like the less frequent one, the quarterly one?
Okay.
If that is okay with you guys?
When do they meet, the superintendent? Superintendent?
Um, I think it was, again, it might not be that way this coming year, but, um, so it's meeting this Thursday, so what is this, is this the second?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Thursday?
Like tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, that's why we need it at 10 a.m. tomorrow.
Right, to Allison.
There's no way I could've made that anyway. Who can make it tomorrow? I mean, we can, we can kind of, we can kind of make it up tomorrow?
I have no idea. Oh, sorry.
No, it's not your fault, it's just the way it ran.
Right.
Let me look at kind of a calendar. What time tomorrow?
Four?
Four?
So, so what, what they, what Allison will need is your response after you, non-public, by 10 a.m. tomorrow.
Yep.
And then, um, everybody will get together to start pulling the summary together, so it's a non-public...
Yeah, what time, because if it's earlier, I'm, I might be able to...
Is, is at four o'clock.
Four o'clock, can you make that, Molly?
I cannot.
I can, I can move something around if need be, if you can't make it.
Is it usually, does it usually hold to an hour?
Um, this one is a little different, because they're gonna be putting the summary document together, but...
Take her back.
I know she tries to do that. I think as long as somebody can be there to talk about the results of what you came with.
Yep. And is it just at the SAU building?
In the conference room.
I, I could, I could go. I'm, I may have, I have a hard stop at five, but I can go.
Okay, if you change your mind, let me know, I can move my one meeting around and I can make it.
Okay. Yeah, I, this, literally the third night in a row, my children don't have me at dinner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's fine.
If, um, we will have somebody there.
Yes.
Most likely, Jamie.
Yeah.
Other than that, I'm happy to take that going forward if you guys want, and then you can...
You should take it forward, yeah. Please, because I, I don't, I don't wanna...
I'd rather have one of us represent each one.
Do I have two committees?
No, 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 no.
No, I was just saying...
No, I'm still a boss, I like, it's good, we have a thing.
So I'll just, safety, security quarterly, you'll do superintendent advisory, monthly is needed, and Bobby's staying on the policy.
Yeah. Well, that was easy.
Oh, yeah, kinda.
Okay.
That's a, if you can't make it tomorrow, can you email, can you get in touch with me about that?
I can't ask Ellen to get in touch with you?
Yes. Yeah.
Well, you can call her.
Can she?
Yes.
Okay.
Is her email number?
I'm sorry?
Email number?
Email works too, right?
Yeah, no, I just, because it's a board member talking to a board member?
Oh, Ellen, yeah, yeah.
That's kind of
As one-to-one, it's okay, get either email or, or phone.
We can't do a conference call.
Right.
Right, we can't all.
Well, no, it's, it's because it's a small board or core, it's true.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I will, I will, I will let you know. For sure.
I will.
Okay. Are you ready for policies?
No.
Yes, he is.
I will say, I'm very glad that Heather is here because we're doing Aprils and May's, and to be perfectly honest, uh, my April memory is a little fuzzy.
Yeah, you might want to come over here.
Yes.
That is why Heather joined us, gracious enough to help, just knowing that we have a heavy load for tonight.
And I should say, it's, it's my April memory from March.
I know.
So it's not like
I was just quickly looking through it again.
I can generally say though, that, um, you know, the summaries are always very helpful, right? And so, let me pull back. So, um, I'll be brought back, so it's page?
Well, I'm looking at, I made notes on April, so which policy are we looking at?
I wasn't looking at April, yeah, so
Academic and I K L?
I K L.
I K L, okay, thank you.
It's helpful, we can go in order of the ones on the agenda.
Yep.
Yep, um, and so I K L, how I remember it, and please Heather jump time in. This had to do with, um, a new policy, but also trying to incorporate AI um, as it is a reality in our students' and educators' lives. And so this was incorporating the recommendations from the, the organization to just have something that's, so updated. And we had a lot of discussion, as we do with, with all of these. Um, and so I don't remember the very granular detail of this, but I do know that we discussed in-depth, uh, the different parts of it and tried to make it formatted correctly. I do remember some of the subheadings being a little bit, the initial, um, draft was not as clear, so this should be pretty clear.
I have a lot of questions, but I don't want to dominate.
Questions are good for us to discuss, are there any?
Okay, do you have anything, Jenny, I don't want to dominate?
No, I, I actually don't, only because I've been working so much with AI that
Well, it might be helpful, just one other point of clarification is, so we, we were receiving a lot of, um, questions or just inquiries, I guess is even a better way of saying it, around, um, AI, right? And so the School Boards Association was already working on that, brought, brought together this model policy that you see in front of you that we went through the, um, of course editing and that kind of thing within our policy committees, we always do. Um, but the, the, the part that they, um, and, and we as a team felt was important was the, uh, part of, even though we're talking, even though there's one section in here, small sec, they're all little small sections, about the improper use of artificial intelligence. There's a whole bunch of work that we're doing around artificial intelligence and the proper use of it, right? As well in our schools, and so, um, but this is really around those prohibited behaviors that we don't want to see in any of our children, our students, as they're, um, implementing their academic journey. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, but there, there certainly is a lot of work on the proper side of it too. That was a, a big part of our conversation during our meeting.
And Jane, just one more, I think, the other thing I do remember is that there were a lot of definitions in this policy that I remember asking, do we really not have these already outlined? And it sounds like the definitions for cheating, or one of my most, I remember self-plagiarism. I was like, well, I had never heard that in my life before. But I guess those are like, um, well-accepted definitions that I think we sort of utilize anyway, but it's not existing in one comprehensive policy currently, and so that was the intention.
Right.
That was my
Just to expand on that, where it's not just about AI, but it's about academic integrity and
Okay, you guys ready?
Yep.
I don't think I have the answers, but yes.
We might not. So the first and largest question I have is how relevant is this to the elementary students? Because, and the reason I ask, there's a couple of different things in here that are, and I'll preface this with, I work in the technology industry and I work with experts in AI all the time, and I know how quickly it is changing and how quickly the constructs of what defines AI and how AI is used are changing on such a constant basis. So, um, I'll, I'll, I'll kind of throw that in there, and then that's probably the biggest question is, is where we're looking at cheating and where we're looking at plagiarism. How relevant is that for an elementary school student which does not have access to their own computers? Or a school, at the current time, s- school computers? So their limitation for their, their exposure to or their ability to cheat or plagiarize is how limited and how expansive? That's kind of my question first, because if they don't have
They do though. Cause they all have Chromebooks.
Do they have their own Chromebooks assigned to them?
Yeah, in the upper grades they do.
Okay, in the upper grades they do, right, thank you for that clarification.
Right?
And they bring those home and they do homework on them?
They do not bring them home, but they are able to use the doc, documents that were created at school.
Okay. And then that's really helpful, so thank you, so that makes it much more applicable for the upper grades.
That's the thing, it's not necessarily going to be applicable for kindergarten, but for the elementary school grades.
As a whole, as a whole.
I agree.
And, and it's also, um, a piece of transparency for us, right? So we have a piece of transparency, right? So we want to ensure that we're transparent with families about what our expectations are for academic integrity. Right, so that's one piece of it. Um, also students have access to their own computers at home in, in many situations, or phones, or fill in the blank, right? Um, and so because we're a system, an SAU sixteen, students that are in our elementary schools will be moving on, so when we have consistent policies about what academic integrity looks like across the SAU, that's also very, very helpful and relevant for families.
So as we look at this policy, is this going to be reflected in a student handbook?
That is correct.
Okay. And a parent handbook, because these are elementary school students.
That's right.
And then, um, now we get into the other stuff. So as AI changes, AI tools change. You know, Grammarly is an AI tool, Google is an AI tool, you have podcasts, Adobe Acrobat. All of these AI tools are changing on a month-to-month, quarter-to-quarter basis. Yep, they are absolutely changing. Um, Canva is an AI-capable tool. One of the things that I'm, would have a question about is the piece in here where it has the instructor teachers in specific instructions, and this is under the improper, improper use of AI. Um, where AI tools really can't be used under teacher's specific instructions or tool, school district guidelines. This kind of highlights to me that the teacher and the administration is taking responsibility for understanding how these AI tools work. What the benefits and downfalls and dangers are. How to protect PII. And how to ensure that no content that should not be captured and stored by an improper AI tool is being used, so there's a piece in here that relates to the teacher and the administration responsibility. So if that is the case, the next thing that pops to my mind is, what does that look like? I would love to see the policy next or soon on how that is going to be managed, because that seems improbable to manage.
So I don't know that I would want that in a policy.
It should be in a handbook.
So that would be technology in general anyway. So when we, when we talk about the protection of PII, when we talk about what we're sharing through technology in any form or fashion, um, that's, that's part of our protocols anyway, and if you go into, deeper into our other technology pieces and the work that our technology department's doing, that, that's a big role that they're playing. But in addition to that, on, on what I would maybe call the fun side of that, um, is that we, we've actually already started a process with our May twelve-eleventh, um, professional development day, where we had, I think, four or five professional development opportunities for people to learn more about this process and, and the protection of it and those kinds of things, so
She meant March eleventh.
Does it say?
May, she meant March.
It feels like just yesterday. Um, so, so there's, I, I think, um, I think there's a lot of work being done in that area, and we are just now scratching that surface. We don't, that, this language, um, nor would there be an expectation that teachers would learn every single AI tool out there, or, or, or to that level. It is, if you are using an AI tool, right? You will underst, you will understand that there are certain protections that need to be made, such with PII. And that doesn't change what, with, with our other policies and the protection of personally identified info information.
Right.
For those listening.
So, thank you, it does help clarify. But where this says in accordance with teacher's specific instructions and guidelines, that it doesn't countermand that, but it is, puts the onus on the teacher and puts the directive on them to understand and to be culpable for the students' work and what they're doing in AI. So they could say, yes, you can use Google, Google is an AI tool, Google just changed their parameters without anybody knowing. And they, and a student puts in, as an example, or even a teacher puts in, I would like to know, um, how to support a female student uh, that is X, Y, and Z with these issues in the seacoast area. Your IP address is gobbled up, that is put up, and now that is their data. So, or a student puts something in there that, it doesn't need to be, I want to figure out what my friend's, um, uh, problem with X, Y, and Z is, let's make it big. And they're just in Google, that's an AI tool, and that's, that now becomes an issue where the teacher, the principal, the student becomes, not student, the administration becomes responsible because they're not knowing exactly what's being put into an AI tool. Grammarly is an AI tool. So I'm just worried about the, the verbiage in here being too specific. If it would be a little bit more protection, I, I kind, this is, this is what I'm kind of going at. I'm kind of going at, before I go into the details of this, I kind of want to see what the policy is for the administration and the teachers, and then drill down into this.
We don't have that policy. No, I mean, no, outside, we have our, we have our, um, policies that talk about PII.
Yep.
And that kind of thing, um.
And then there's the school district internet staff, access for staff.
Exactly, we just have to sign off on, there's a, there's multitude of, um, processes and, um, parameters that are in place through our technology department um, for teachers and administrators and things that we have to follow.
Yep.
Um, with several different aspects of accountability that go along with that.
Yep.
So those are already available.
Cool.
We don't have an AI policy for educators necessarily, I don't think we're there yet. But what this says is very specifically, students may only use AI tools in accordance with their teacher's specific instructions. In other words, they can't, if, if the teacher says, I'm, I'm just going to be silly here for a moment.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
But if the teacher says, you may not use the letter B in any of your searching in AI, and a student goes in and uses the letter B, they're not following this policy.
And if they are not following this, what happens?
So then, then you go back to C, where we talked about, and again, that was a very silly example.
No, no, it's the use of examples.
Then you go to the consequences, those consequences, like every consequence that we would have would be defined in the parent-student handbook. And actually, we have some due process policies later. To actually go into that a little deeper.
Jane, can I just, uh, to that end, I feel like, I hear, I actually, um, hear and appreciate some of what you're saying, not that I don't agree with the other part, but I do think the last sentence, for me, the last sentence of, of subsection two, B sub two, for me helps mitigate any stress that I, like it's saying the teacher is providing general instruction related to acceptable use, but ultimately in the end, the students are expected to, if they're not sure, ask for clarification. So it's, remember you were saying this teacher would be culpable for all this? I don't know that I, I would be that concerned about, personally, about that consequence, I wish there were future
And when you, when you say that, Jane, do you, do you mean that if a student does something wrong, that the teacher is in trouble?
Well, that's my, that's not, that's my question. That is, cause it's, if they don't have, if they're not following the teacher's specific instruct, instructions, or if they are, and they are doing something that is improper, and doesn't mean it needs to be anything bad, it's just not by the, the instructor's specific instructions, then the, what, what, what does that mean? And what happens to that AI information that is no longer?
But I encourage you to think of this as not any different than any other improper action by a student. Right, so we, we have, we have parameters for, for behavior in a school system and in a classroom. The teacher set their classroom, they probably don't call them, this is Suzie, I apologize, but classroom rules.
Expectations.
Expectations, is that norms, I love it, um, those kinds of things, right? Um, so that, that, this wouldn't be any different than that.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
That is helpful, thank you.
Sure. Those are really great questions, Jane, thank you.
You said you had a lot to talk about.
I do.
God, I'm sorry.
No, it's gonna be a long meeting.
Do we think it makes sense to, to do the other ones, or like, do you feel like we have questions to be with?
I'm going through my notes and I want to make sure that it's, it's, um,
Is it helpful to, to provide, Jane, with an explanation too of how the policy committee meetings have been modified in the last couple of years in terms of how things are facilitated and just what the general expectations are now for the policy committee, and then how, what occurs at the policy committee translates into the school board meetings?
I, I'm happy to do that, so
Okay.
Um, so Heather presents to us, the policy committee, a number of, uh, drafts, right? Of either new or proposed, uh, changes or removals of, uh, policies in advance, so we all review them pretty thoroughly in, in advance of the meeting. Come together, it's hybrid, half a person, half virtual. There are, um, a robust representation of people on the, the committee, including more than one lawyer, which I find very helpful. Uh, also people from different backgrounds, um, and obviously from different schools within the SAU sixteen. Um, and we, Heather, very, not only, if it's something that Heather has expertise in, she will introduce the policy and sort of go through the context, and we'll go line by line about concerns or questions that people, or edits that people have. If it happens to live within a particular space, like either special education, or, um,
Technology.
Technology or have you, there are representatives from that particular area that Heather has come in and actually often will introduce and contextualize the con, the, the policy. And we spend actually a pretty good amount of time combing through, making substantial edits, updates. To the point where, and actually, there are people from the elementary school will often say, uh, or will have, like, some of these things may not be applicable to the elementary school, if there are specific things like that. And then actually, thankfully, some of those things won't show, those policies won't show up in here, so we'll only get the ones that are
I can actually give you an example of that later, yeah.
But we review all of them. Um, so as a result, I actually, I think it was maybe two meetings ago, I had sort of made the suggestion as the policy committee rep to just sort of say, these were reviewed and edited pretty thoroughly, you know, um, I'm hap, and I'm on that meeting as well as a new field representative. Um, and so, uh, generally, if I, I would be happy to say, I propose that we pass all of these, right, and then discuss them if we need to, um, beforehand. And so I do think that there's a, a role we have made edits specific to new fields. Whether it's because it is an elementary lens that we have here, or our particular building is slightly different, or our board felt slightly differently. But in general, I don't know that we've substantially made any like huge changes to any of the policies or taken out like a section, and I'm not suggesting you're doing that, but um, I definitely feel much more comfortable implementing really any of these policies with minor tweaks.
Yeah, and one of the things I think that has been really good too, um, Jane, I'll speak to the fact that there, um, there, the policies that relate to each other, we tend to see at the same time. That was one of my biggest hurdles, when I, I was referencing another one, I'm like, I don't know what that is. I need, so that was, those are the only ones we tended to go back on more recently.
If we didn't have them, yeah.
If we didn't have them, but other than that, yeah, just like what Bobby said, they pretty much scrubbed these pretty well, so, um, I always
Yeah, and we do have some of, well, some of them are in, the references weren't, were there, so that's
We tried to make it consistent as well.
Yeah, if there's a legal reference that goes, so this, so the other point, um, when we bring them forward, we are using either the model from the School Boards Association, which are developed by the attorneys who are deeply engaged with the, um, legislative, um, actions of the, at the state, but also follow the federal policies as well. Just to make sure that we understand that. Um, they're also on call, which I've done that several times. They're also on call, which I've done that several times.
You have.
Thank you, Will. And so it's, so that's really great, because then we have a model to go by that we know has been vetted. But then we can also, as long as we're not breaking the law and changing some of the language, then we can also go back and like, like you said, just really kind of fix it for, for our purposes. We do really encourage as much as possible to keep the policies similar from district to district to district. Because students go from here to the middle school and having those same kinds of policies, as long as it's relevant to the elementary, of course. But having similar policies across has been very valuable to families is what we've been hearing, so.
And then also knowing that we have the mechanism to review and update policies if there ever needs to be them in the steady hands of Heather, I think is, made me feel better, because I, I joined policy committee when we had like a million to review. I mean, not really, but, and I think that was as a result.
No, really.
But that was as a result of Heather, I, I think you did like an audit or somebody did an audit to sort of say, we need to update all these policies for these reasons.
Yeah.
So this being a new one, it's certainly possible that we have to audit or update this next month, next year.
Yeah, I mean, and that's kind of what my next, I would like to update this one or at least look at it.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, AI is gonna change between now and then.
Well, one of, one of the things that we kept talking about in the team, going to your point, Jane, is that, is, is that we wanted to make number two as vague as possible, right? By still using the term artificial intelligence.
Yeah.
Without really clearly saying exactly what was available today, because literally the next day it changed, right?
Then not only it changes, the, the whole entire technology changes within one specific application.
Absolutely, yeah. And that's why we're excited that we've got some people within the district who are like kind of taking this on as far as professional development and learning for educators.
And this is our first attempt at taking this on through the lens of policy and certainly, I, I, I like what you said, Jane, that, you know, this is a policy that is in flux and we want to make sure that, or an issue that's heavily in flux. We want to make sure that we're reviewing it on a regular basis and certainly knowing that even if, you know, even throughout the years, that we can come back to policy at any point in time via the policy committee.
Yes.
Can I ask this question? I don't think we've ever done this as a board since I've been on. We can review any policies at any time. Correct? Not just because the policy committee does it.
Yeah.
So if we wanted to every year in May, you review it?
And what I would request at that point is if you decided to do that, right, which would be perfect, then I would request that we bring it back, whatever suggestion that this group had. Bring that, because it might be good for everybody.
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, I honestly would love to see this one reviewed at least once a year. This is going to be important for the, for this. And then the one that is associated with the teachers as well, the, not the teachers, that's not, that's not accurate, the employees of the school. To be able to make sure that we're staying abreast of everything. I can guarantee you, as soon as the summer starts, this is going to change. And it's going to change five more times within the school year. I mean, even prompt engineering is changing in drastic.
So AI will, not necessarily the language of the policy, correct?
AI will.
Yes, of course, yeah.
And how AI is used, certain, all these, and, and what it's being used in.
Yeah.
Heather, we, you're, to that, we actually do have one or two that we're required to review, right? It's like the investments or something?
We have investments, we have the wellness policy, I think it's every three years, we have, yeah, it's a variety of, yeah.
So with that, I think, thank you for answering questions. It definitely made some, made me feel more ease and some clarification. So that is really quite helpful. And since this references, you know, handbooks and stuff like that, and I am no longer have a child at the school, I'd love to see what the parent handbook looks like.
It's online.
It's on, it's online, right? Yeah. I'll grab that then. Thank you.
True.
I do have one question, actually. Does this, I feel like it does, but I, I've read so many, I, I think I might be confusing which ones I read it in. Does this policy have any language for those students who are IEPs and are using?
Like computer?
Computer.
Like assistive technology?
Yes, assistive technology.
Uh, no, this, it doesn't, but, but they would have to, but students in general, give, under the direction of their IEP would certainly, it, it doesn't limit what type of technology with this.
Yeah.
So that would be applicable for them.
And it covers it in that it's the teacher's specific instructions for the school, so it would be within the parameters of it. It's just not singled out.
I was just thinking like things like grammarly and things.
Yeah, well, grammarly is absolutely hundred percent, yeah.
I haven't used that in a while, Karen.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many.
There's so much AI, that's amazing. I need fully embrace it as a photographer.
It's fantastic. I mean, it's, it's great.
Okay, so are we?
I'm good.
Are we good with this one to move forward?
I think so.
Okay, so I'll make a motion at the end, but I'll just check off the ones we're good with.
Yeah. The next one, J I C E is a revision and ironically, if you look at the summary, I did episode before, the summary was provided by ChatGPT. Well done, Heather.
It was like a three hundred page case law. I was like, can you just please summarize this one?
But basically.
Working smarter.
Yeah, this was just a matter of updating it to make it aligned with recommendations from case law, right?
The case law, yeah.
And I do remember that we had a, probably at least a twenty minute conversation about that first paragraph.
Yeah, I could tell.
And so we can certainly make adjustments to that, but I would say, I would recommend that we not, because I really do feel like there was a lot of give and take from a lot of perspectives to try to have something that was comfortable and applicable.
The previous policy really focused on students' free speech, right? That's, but that's not what the policy is about. The policy is about school-sponsored publications. That can also be a student publication that is being sponsored by the school, right? And so what the case law said was, is if, if it is a school-sponsored publication, then, then the, the administration has the rights to monitor and engage in what that is. So the policy now is around that management and, and monitoring of.
What is the definition of school-sponsored?
You are reading my mind, girl.
Yeah.
That's, no, but what is that? I, I know what the publications would be, but what does it mean for a school to sponsor something?
And if I can add to that?
Go ahead.
I'll give you an example. If girls on the run or if the, you know, sports want to be able to distribute something. And Susie says, yes, it's okay. Is that school-sponsored because it's now being distributed?
So then you go to your district media publications policy, which is your next one, and under, under the website publishing policy. And that helps you determine when, when you have some, something come in from the outside and what you're able to throw up on the, on the website.
And is it only if it's, um, okay, sorry, if it's, if it's distributed at school? Cause that's what, it does say it shall.
Yeah.
If it's, so if it's something that is a publication that's not approved.
And not distributed.
This language, just tell me if I'm reading it correctly, it doesn't mean that it can't be done, it just cannot be distributed on school property.
Well, but no websites, for example, also that's not really, that's not really being distributed.
That was more thinking physical.
Yeah. So any publication, so again, back to Jenny's question, what are we, what are we defining as a publication? I think that is an excellent point to start with.
Yeah, I also, I'm, I'm just thinking of an example. During COVID, we didn't have a yearbook. I created one for the, the fifth graders. It was not paid for by the school, it was paid for by the parents, it was created by the parents, it was created by the students.
Did Susie approve that, that book?
Nope.
Okay.
But it was distributed at school.
Yep.
So the, the.
So that's, I guess, I mean, that, that's like a super.
That is a very simple and easy.
Very simple way to, I think that would be a, a question. How, what does that look?
And that wouldn't be school-sponsored, but it is definitely distributed.
So according to this policy, I'll just use that example. That publication, if it was not approved by the principal at any need, will not be considered a school publication and shall not be distributed. So, but this policy wasn't on school property.
Right, it wa, yeah, of, of course, this wasn't in play.
Playing it out in real time.
I'm just trying to say, yeah.
Going for, potentially going forward.
I, the question I would ask the board is, is that, is it a problem? Or do, do we feel comfortable with this language? Because I understand that, I want us to have enough time to discuss each and every one of these. But I also am going to ask the board, to, to what end are we discussing this, right? Like what is the question that we had?
The question is.
So I think there's two different things, if I may, Jane.
Yeah, go right ahead, please.
And, and maybe there's a extra word that we can put in here. Unfortunately, everybody has it already approved, but, so.
It's okay, we can do it.
Where it says any publication not approved by the principal will not be considered a school publication, period. Any publication not approved to be distributed on school property shall not be, I'm, I'm making up words, of course, it would have to be a better sentence than that. But so the, I think what the committee thought, and correct me if you think I'm wrong here, but the committee thought it was, if, so let's say girls on the run came in and say, hey, can you pass out these pamphlets?
Yeah.
Right? That's not, that's not a school-sponsored publication, but they're looking for us to pass things out. So it's being distributed on school property, but it's almost a separation in that sentence, if you will. I don't, I don't think that, I, I, I think that there was, I think what I hear you saying is you believe that if Susie hasn't approved it, that it can't be distributed because of the way that it's written.
Yes, that's.
Right, and I, and I think what the intention was, is that if Susie doesn't, if Susie says this can't, I.
I don't approve.
I don't know. There, there's a group that comes in with malicious hate intent and they want you to pass out things. She, she has the authority as the principal of the school to say no.
Yes, yes.
To that, right? And so I think, I think that was the intention of that. I do see how that statement can be confusing.
It just gets slightly fuzzy and it mixes metaphors, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I think to clarify it, it, could we add oversee school-sponsored, school-created? So this would be student or building, you're coming from inside. So this is.
Oh, is in, in the first line, you mean?
Yeah, in the first line. And I'm, and my, my words aren't coming out right, but it's, it's not just school-sponsored. It is publications that the students create or the staff creates, not outside.
That's, is that a more substantive conversation that would warrant this to go back to the policy committee to discuss?
Uh, then I guess maybe, I don't know.
I think that's where substantive changes occur.
Yes, absolutely. I, I, I do, which won't meet until the next year, next year, by the way. So I do think for new fields, if you wanted to pass this tonight, I mean, I would want to bring this back before the committee next year to talk about the change, but if you wanted to pass this tonight to ensure that we got something up on, you know, with this.
Yeah, because in the first amendment, right, it's a change.
And shall not be distributed on school property and, 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 and add, you know, just remove it, basically. Just remove that one piece.
Or make it specific to school or student.
Yeah, I, no, I think by removing that, that clarifies it. It's, then it's not considered a school publication. And we don't talk anything about distribution because this, this other, right? We're looking at another policy that talks about distribution, don't we?
We do, yeah, yeah.
So I think that that covers like the, if Susie can say no to distribution of stuff.
It's done. It doesn't matter what it is.
Right, so I, I feel like if we take that, it doesn't.
We can do that. And then what, on that, it would be a simple.
Does that make sense to you? It does make sense.
It does, it does, although I, I'm going to be honest, I don't, I mean, the language might not be as precise as we want it to be. Or as it can be, but I also don't see the language as written as problematic.
Well, I see it as problematic, somebody who, who, who did the work on and then all of a sudden it can't be passed out to students. Like, I, I just would hate for, not malicious things, but things that like parents or students or are doing in, in a very harmless fashion, all of a sudden are not considered a, a school publication.
School-sponsored publication.
School-sponsored publication and then can't be distributed.
Well, I mean.
Does that make, do you know what I mean?
It does, although I had at least, at least one, maybe two examples of flyers myself of events that I was doing in town that I thought would be cool to distribute in the school, and actually I was told that I couldn't. And I was annoyed at first, but then I, I thought to myself, okay, well, there's gotta be, there's gotta be some policy, you know, dictating this and and I sort of moved on and distributed in other ways.
So that's what I mean. I think that that, this other policy does.
So does it make sense to move on to KD and then?
Is it that one?
Or no, not KD.
It's, yeah, it is KD.
Is it?
Yeah, it's KD. Yep, that's the social media platforms.
And then think about J I C E in relation to that. Well, so the, so the website publishing is where we, we'll see some of that information in there, but that's just for promotion on a website, not necessarily paper publication. But I, I.
KDC is being, no, KD CR is being withdrawn. KDC is being commended.
I mean, just, um, I'm going to ask a question about policy committee. Heather, is there any opportunity to have more than one representative of a school board on the policy committee? I only ask because I just wonder, like it would have been helpful to have this discussion as an example with the whole policy committee so that all of the.
Well, I think we could have the forty some odd members of the policy, of the joint board on the policy committee and still
It was unwillful, yeah.
Have one person.
Was a good perspective.
Oh, yes.
Could change your mind, yeah, that's, that's fair.
Yeah, and, and we have to be able to get the work done and the bigger you make things.
That's fair, okay. So no, the answer's.
I would prefer, I will do whatever you need me to do, but I would prefer that we.
I'm just trying to.
We do, I mean, Exeter and the co-op both have two members because of their size.
I'm inclined to pass this as is right now, but if you can bring up those issues and we can revisit this at a, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that too. I, I mean, it was literally just, yeah, I totally, I just, I mean, it's,
It's good depending.
When you strike something like the students' first amendment rights, it's kind of a.
That's fair.
Yep.
It's kind of a gut-wrenching, like, oh, this means the kids can never do anything.
And the way that I brought that up, I mean, was we are not striking students' first amendment rights. We are not doing that. We are taking this policy and making it into the policy it was supposed to be. If, if we want to, I, I'm not recommending this because it, because we have state law and federal law that protects this. But if we want a students' free speech type of policy, right, then we would have to, we should name it that.
And that's, that's. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
I'm sure you guys had this conversation. That's why, that was my initial gut reaction when I first.
I didn't have that.
Well, also, if you look at the date it was adopted to, it kind of tells a.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, I, I'm fine. I just want, I, I wanted a little bit more clarification on what school-sponsored meant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm okay with that too.
Me too. You okay, Bobby?
Yes.
Okay.
KD.
KD. Fun, social media.
Um, we got T-SO, so K.
We just ban it everywhere.
Again, this is new. It's recommended by the school, the school board association, regulating the social media platform. And then I'm just going to pull it up to see if I remember any. So we had a very long discussion about what a platform is. Like far too long of a conversation about that, in my opinion.
How'd you take good notes?
Um, no, I, these are my, in my brain. I don't, I didn't take notes for this with me, because this was for March, but. And we, and we landed on this definition as acceptable.
Oh, one thing?
Yeah.
For J I C E, I believe the word designee should be capitalized? Can you just make a, I don't, is that true? Cause it's.
I don't see it capitalized.
It is, it's not, and not in anything.
I don't think we normally capitalize that.
Okay.
District we do, but not.
Yeah, all right.
We are trying to be more consistent, I'm glad you actually, we are trying to be more consistent and we do miss things, so it's always helpful to.
No, that's not, I'm, that is perfect. So I'm sorry.
From one policy to another, you might see something different, but yeah.
Yep.
Um, and then there was also some discussion about, and I don't encourage us to necessarily tackle this today, but about, when we talk about public comments, there was some discussion around sort of the limits of that and how, you know, some platforms you can have no limitations and we felt like this language was sort of the balance of all of those things for school district, social media platforms.
Is this policy one that will go, no, nevermind. Sorry. I was going to ask about joint board, but no.
It could possibly be one, because we have an SAU website.
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah, it could be.
I think, because when I read this, I mean, I, I thought of it from this hat, but then I also thought of it from the entire SAU.
We're actually starting to develop what the, the next group will be, because we didn't, we already brought, what, was it eleven or twelve policies?
Right.
So we're trying to come up with.
I feel like this might be one. I feel like this might be one.
Mm hmm.
Um. I think that was kind of my only comment.
Yep, that's great.
Because it, in that that sense from like discussions we had during the communications committee.
Yeah, that's great.
And public forums and.
Yep.
Who responds and all of that discussion, so and how we respond and how we don't respond, that kind of stuff.
Great, thank you.
The question that I have on these are it, there's a bunch of references on um authorization to establish social media guidelines, monitoring of social media, et cetera, um. Where it says the district reserves are right, and this is near the bottom of the privacy, and will monitor all district social media. Do we have a who is going to do that, how often they're going to do that?
So so before, so for, let me give an example, so when we, when we have our Facebook page.
Yep.
Right, I don't think we use it that often, but if we have a Facebook page, then whoever is re- um responsible for posting or um let's say Sharon, for example, if she's responsible for managing that Facebook page, then that would be her responsibility. Oftentimes, we don't allow for comments in there because there's it's almost impossible to keep track of all of that, to make sure that we don't fall into this, are people saying things that are cruel and unusual.
So that is helpful, thank you, is there, what I'm looking for is if something is misrepresented, if there's something that goes up there and there are comments, what is the chain of command and?
That's what that, because when you look up at the top, that what that first thing you just mentioned, where it talked about the superintendent designee will establish guidelines. That's what we would see in something like that, that management aspect of it.
So they're establishing the guidelines, who is overseeing those guidelines? So they're establishing a guideline, right, so who's person that is going to be executing those guidelines, is it the same person?
Not necessarily, no, because it depends on if it's a school, if it's at the district level, if it's at the, um you know, it could it could be that um that Drew at the middle school um has a Facebook page for the middle school, right? And he may designate X Y Z to implement that, but they're using the guidelines developed by the superintendent or designee, which will likely be a committee of folks.
Okay. Um, okay.
This this one is another one, I I would just make a note with everything that we've done with communication and the conversation, um and with the strategic plan and everything, that this is something that we potentially revisit, be if social media becomes more of a communication strategy or more of a prevalent way that we communicate with the public, um that we make sure that this is. That's just a, that's just a high level as we're.
Yeah, I agree, I think honestly, anything, this technology and, you know, having to do with things that are.
Not that I wanna review policy.
But you'll already know this, whatever.
Some of these, right, I hear, we hear you, some of these are very time sensitive and again, in a in a frequent state of flux.
Right, and I feel like, I mean, just coming off the communications committee and lots of discussions around social media, website and everything, I think that this is something that um should be, it's more of a note to bring forward to the
Yeah.
the senior leadership team about that this would be a good thing to make sure that we're buttoning up.
Yeah, and then the last paragraph in here under copyright, the last sentence, it should be the superintendent or designee to keep it consistent.
Well, thank you, yeah.
Okay, I think I'm okay with this one, you're okay with this one?
With.
Yeah, this.
With.
Oh, yeah, KDC.
KDC was um a reorganization of a couple of policies that we had and then the an addition, a little dollop of some extra um.
Dollop.
Service.
Uh that had to do with um copyright laws, et cetera. Um I do also remember there being quite robust discussion about um links uh on the webpages, including links to, and I can't find the spot, but remember about the um the bus company?
Yeah.
And I don't remember where that reference where that was, but.
Um, I hope we fixed that.
Outside, yes, we we talked very much at length and somehow we landed on this language, um I don't remember if if we changed much of it.
I'm forgetting where it is, what is it, is it on second?
On the second page.
Webpages may not contain links to other pages that are not completed.
Commercial, commercial use, we were trying to get, commercial use, advertisements, business logo, et cetera.
There it is, okay, like the third.
I'm wondering if we added the unless approved, but I don't remember what we changed on there, but we did discuss and had this this difference in.
Unless approved by superintendent.
That's what we did, we added that.
Or does it make sense, because if they're, if if com- if you're doing advertising or or like sponsorships or anything like that, that would be.
Specifically for our bus drivers.
It was, I think that wasn't in there, that was why we were like, well, we have it up already, so.
And it just wasn't a thought, and in the sa- in the model policy revision from the School Boards Association, they didn't have that in there, and we were like, oh, gosh, no, we need to do that, you know?
We need them to hire bus drivers, yeah.
So oftentimes, when you see designee in these, it'll be the principal or, you know, depending on what the issue is.
So in, under organizational responsibility, it says the superintendent has primary responsibility on the content of the website, that is the SAU main website. Should we have it say the superintendent or designee?
Oh, we don't mention first page.
First page, yes, I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine.
Uh or, but the first paragraph from organizational responsibility, it's the second, end of the second line, the superintendent has primary responsibility for the content of the website.
And then the for individual school, yeah, uh so we were talking about the SAU website there?
Yep.
For the SAU website, the superintendent has a primary responsibility for for individual school websites, principal.
Says the school websites, should that say the SAU sixteen dot org?
It does, it does, say SAU.
Oh, okay, yep, sorry, I was assuming, so it says school websites or official publications for, yep, okay, so sorry.
Yep.
So where it says the SAU websites.
Website.
Website.
So that's, so, thank you.
They crossed out the F.
Thank you.
Got you.
I know, some of the crossouts don't show up.
That should be referencing SAU sixteen dot org from the prior paragraph, correct?
Right.
So that needs to be not just the SAU website, it needs to say the SAU sixteen dot org website.
It's the only.
It's the only one, that's why I'm clarifying it up above to designate that it's the only official website, and I think it's implied, it's intended to be implied.
I was hoping it was implied.
Yeah, because this is defining it, that the SAU sixteen.
Yep, I got it.
And then, so going forward, the SA, when they say the SAU, it implies that it's this.
So then there needs to be a paragraph, a a parentheses that says SAU.
Go to this, go to the very first sentence, the end of the sentence, it has that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep, 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 thank you.
It took me three times, so it's all good.
This is like my seventh time, so you're you're ahead of me.
It's all good.
Um and then I do, was this the one that also had the the um the references for citations or something?
Copyright?
Copyright.
Yeah.
Yes, where was that?
And and then we again had a very legal conversation, but I don't remember.
Come out.
Uh it this, this is.
No, 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 I meant, I meant, yeah.
I don't know where it is, though.
So secured, that should be the top of the second page-ish?
Yes.
Indicate that permission has been secured to include copyright information, materials on websites.
Webpages must include a statement of copyright when appropriate.
Yep.
Yeah.
So you know how on some, yeah, you know what that, alright.
Yep.
And then like the the accuracy and the viability, you know, just.
Boy, this is a lot.
I promise not to bring any technology into your chat.
Oh, you can, you're just gonna get a lot, this is, this is not exploding my brain, this is, I live this. I I think I'm okay with this one, there's still a lot of questions and a lot of like things that we should probably revisit occasionally. Oh, so the other question I have is where in the top of the second page, first paragraph, last line, all links will be tested for accuracy? Okay, great, but what happens after time? Like, when, frequency, like, they're tested for accuracy once, and then what if that link goes dead? So as an example.
So I don't know that if that kind of detail belongs in the policy, though.
Fair enough, more in the procedure.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, that that should be something that comes out of Jason's office, saying, you know, every, you know, every summer, well, you go through the website, mature the links work, or, you know, that kind of thing.
If not, I'll happily do it.
You heard that, right?
In perpetuity, right?
Don't worry, I'll be looking for something else, and I'll be like, Suzie! I can't find it.
There you go.
I think this one's okay, I I mean, I went through, I went through it a lot, too, um.
I mean, like scribbles on it are immense.
I appreciate you all reading it, that's very nice.
If anything, we're thorough.
I may have read it like a treadmill, but yeah.
Hey, that's even better, because my brain's really working.
Right.
Um, I'm okay.
Okay.
I'm all right.
And the last one is the recommendation to withdraw, is is encompassed in the dollar.
Yes, that that school board encompassed the two together.
Okay.
So those would be April, you want to come and do them?
Oh, wait, can we get to the May ones now?
Wait, let's, let's approve, let, yes, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve I K L J I C E KDC as written, and then KD with amendments.
I'll second that.
And also approve the withdrawal of KDCR.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
No problem, let's do that, done, okay.
Way to do that.
And to be clear, I K D, the amendment was or designee on the last page.
Yes.
Yes, yes, got it, thank you.
Like, what?
And that's a, that's a non substantial, so we're gonna do it on all of them.
Um, okay, so uh J I C, Student Code of Conduct.
Okay, so this should be more fresh in my brain, but for some reason it's as fuzzy, um it is a new policy.
It has a vacation in between its front.
Yeah, this is a new policy, I remember asking the question, wow, I'm surprised we don't have a policy like this, yeah, um and now we do. And it is connected to J I C D, which I think is also, yeah, so these two
Mm hmm.
Um J I C and J I C D are very closely connected. It was amended, yeah, the RSA was amended, updated, so there were some things that were, um it was almost opportune to create a new one because we were able to fold in some new law. Go at it.
I have, I only have one question on this, and it had, in, it stems from my days of kinder- a kid in a, no, a preschooler.
Yep.
Um.
Are we looking at J I C?
Uh, J I C, sorry.
J I C.
Sorry, um it uh a parent shall be, it's it's basically the the parental notification of simple assault.
Where are you, I'm sorry.
D.
Page two.
Got it, oh, I'm sorry, page two.
Okay, J I C, page two.
D.
D as a.
D as a dog.
Mm hmm.
Um, the, so the notif- parental notification, I just had a question, um a clarifying question. It says they would be notified if it occurs during the day with any form of bodily injury, incl- including bruising or discoloration. Um, that that's including, not that they wouldn't be notified if, I guess.
That's right, I almost had to notify.
Yeah, no matter, I mean.
Regardless if there is bruising or discoloration, you want the the notification to happen.
Yes, yes, and that's that's, I'm reading that correctly, right? That was like, that it doesn't matter how, okay.
This is including, not excluding.
There you go.
So, any form, okay, that is a good question.
I just wanted to make sure I was reading it right, honestly, reading it right.
Yeah, I mean, if if basically, we don't want to um, like, a better way of saying it, uh poo poo, a kid just getting a little bruise on their arm or a little just, you know, a little redness.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So it's to make sure that no matter what it is, from here.
There's communication around.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Because sometimes, oh, they're fine, no.
And then the only two things I have was in the second paragraph, sorry, in the second section, Student Code Contact. Conduct, sorry, it says the school board, should this just be the board?
Where are you?
Uh, under Student Code of Contact.
Under B, okay.
Under B, yep, the school, instead of saying the school board.
Oh, yes, no, I cannot believe Brian didn't catch that.
Um, and then where it, a little bit further on, it's the second sentence up from the bottom, it says, further the standards shall reflects. Should that be reflect? Not plural, it's not singular.
Shall reflect, yes, great job.
Yeah, we read these. Other than that, I really didn't have too much to add, other than than that, um.
I didn't either, I just wanted that, I wanted to make sure I was reading it right, that was literally annoying.
It's a really good call, yep, okay, good.
That was easy.
Hey, the J I C D is a revision.
That's amended, yep.
Uh and it is in conjunction with J I C. Um in the summary, I thought this was helpful just to point out um that amendments to the law, um and therefore as a result in the policy, the quotas here largely designed to affect career emphasis on the emotional academic needs of students through support intervention strategies having to do with um limiting durations of long-term suspensions and sort of some nuances around those.
Yeah, this one was a long one.
I have two.
And it says, although lengthy, the policy provides transparency for students.
So, I have two pretty significant questions, and I don't know if this may cause us to delay this one, because this is.
We've done it before, man.
This one, this one, I'll be honest, took me a long time to read and digest and um gave me a little PTSD, so um my question is under on page four, under s- um number seven.
Number seven?
Yep.
Okay.
Under section A, under five, that's five.
Five, yep.
The V, yeah.
Yes.
Um for bringing, so it's, it talks about expulsion, for bringing or possessing a firearm as de- as defined. My question is, because it talks about firearms throughout, but does not talk about any other weapons? Is there a reason that the this, the RSA or the statute does not um distinguish other
forms of.
Forms of weapons?
Yep.
Knives, um.
I I can't speak to why the legislature didn't put that in there.
I do wonder if it's part of, I don't know criminal threatening, but the le- the legal definition of that is.
I don't know either, that, I guess it's why my, I was, I was having trouble with the
Yeah.
it's n- n- not, it's, none of it's okay, but I was having trouble with the, that other things are not.
Well, we remember, this is expulsion.
A a great.
Right, as a student, a student brings a jackknife to school. Right, or a student brings um.
So I guess, it, is there a different?
A pocket knife, a pocket knife?
Yeah.
A slingshot. Okay.
Which technically, you hit the person the right way with a slingshot with the right tool in the slingshot, you can kill somebody.
Yes, so that, I guess that's my, my my other clarifying question, is it not necessarily the firearm, but any other weapon? If it's used.
So you're talking about intent.
Intent, because is.
So I don't have it in front of me, but we do have a policy, um, was it that we did last year?
You know, like if they brought a a jackknife and then.
There was a, there was a policy that we did last year, I just can't remember the letters of it, that had to do with um, it was when we brought the big group of policies that Esther um went through with school safety, that talked about those kinds of weapons.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Jenny, I also just to, I looked up the RSA six thirty one four, because I was curious about the the one above it for no threatening.
Yeah.
And that one, it doesn't expressly say anything about weapons, but it's saying things like a person delivers, threatens to deliver or causes the delivery of any sub of um for the purpose of terrorizing or whatever.
Okay.
So it's sort of, as I understand it.
So.
And any act of violence would also.
Act of, yeah.
Any act of violence, well, I'm gonna kill you with this knife, okay.
With this, what that would also be a clue.
I guess that's what, because it called out firearms, but didn't ca- call out any other, I I was a little.
But we're saying.
But we're saying that the ones above it would cover that.
So so this covers the, this covers the federal and state legislation that around expulsion.
Yep.
Do have policies around the safety of students regarding other weapons as well.
And also, this speaks to the, this particular number five, under seven A, speaks to specifically the excuse me, specifically to a firearm possession as that statute, but then up above, other weapons could potentially be included under acts of violence and criminal.
Yeah, absolutely.
As someone who serves as your court liaison as well for students who are, who are, you know, being held accountable for doing those delinquency statutes, yes.
Yes. Thank you. I knew you would know. Okay.
That these are, these are interpreted more broadly in terms of the other RSAs here under items two and three.
Okay, my, then my other question is, um, the was there any conversation about um the, I'm trying to find where it is, um, uh when a student come, is reintegrated? Um, there was, um.
That I believe is.
Rand sixty, page five, Rand State and other.
Yep.
Thank you, um. One of the things, uh it listed out who was involved, and I wanted to ask the question about, because it did not specifically say like a s- a a school counselor or anyone like that being involved in. because it did not specifically say like a, a, a school counselor or anyone like that being involved in the transition.
Um, up above, it's, wait a minute, hang on, it, building principal designate, um, I believe on the prior page, hang on. Um, oh no, that's alternative education services. Oh, you're right. I'm sorry.
It's on page four, under reentry meetings and intervention plans.
Yep.
Thank you.
Returning to cla, regular classes, a suspended student and a parent regarding when available shall meet with the building principal or designate to assist in the student in return, in smoothly returning to the school setting. I can tell you that in every school that I have worked in here in SEU sixteen, when students are having reentry meetings, it is a, it is a thoughtful team approach, and the principal specifically picks, um, a comprehensive team to assist in the reentry.
And that happens at all of our schools?
Yes.
So that's under long-term suspension, Jenny, were you specifically asking about the reentry for expulsion?
Um, well, kind of both, honestly, um, because, um, returning, yeah, a suspended student and parent when available shall meet with the building principal or designated to assist. So I guess, it, because it just says principal, and I know in practice, we're doing more than just the principal, but I, I mean, would it, would it be inappropriate to add, um, language around the fact that we have a team of people that are coming in? Just that, when we talk about the social emotional side of, um, the children and, and, um, everything, I mean, I think that's an important kind of piece.
To ensure is included.
To ensure that somebody.
I just, so yes, Jenny, and I think we wouldn't have to put it in both spots, because I just, it's,
It doesn't reference it?
B, C, F is referenced, which is the paragraph four.
Right.
So that was smart, whoever, uh, structured that way.
Cool, so it would just need to be.
If we just put it in the section B, CF, which is, so it's on page four, reentry meetings and intervention plan, so if we put it into that section, it'll be referenced back to the, um, reintegration after expulsion.
I guess that would be my only concern in. It's best practices, but right now, but, I mean, what, I wanted it to be continued.
But you want it to be, to be more explicit.
If Suzie goes away tomorrow, not that that's happening, but, you know, I mean.
But the, but the principals should be involved in that.
Absolutely, I'm saying principal and.
And other team, that other applicable team members or other applicable team members.
Other, I, I don't know the wording necessarily, but, I mean, we have a s, a school counselor for a reason. We have.
Jenny, the only.
Unless the student had a problem with the school, I mean, we want to be careful that we don't.
Smoothly is written there, does that not?
Or teen, even teen, um, I don't know the right words.
I think the reason why I would imagine it wasn't included at the outset of this is because these amendments that occurred in twenty twenty to student discipline, really came from the understanding that we want to be more student-centered, more student-specific, that, you know, it requires behavior plans for all students, not just students with disabilities. Um, so I think it was implied, and I also hear you about it being more explicit. I, I think it was implied with the intent of the changes within the policy.
Absolutely, I think most of it, I mean, I thought it was very well-written, that was just the one thing, and it's, it's probably just, um.
You're advocating for students.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm trying to figure out the best place to put it.
I know.
I.
Do we wanna?
Assist the student in, sorry.
No, no, no.
I think, I think every, the, the writers, the authors are trying to encapsulate that in the adverb smoothly, which implies that it would be with the whole team, but I agree, it's weak.
That's so upper interpretation, I mean, I, I have been in situations where, um.
Somebody thought of a smoother one.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I hear you, but, and so I'm saying maybe in that phrase, it can be included, so I'm not sure, you want to include.
But we want it under C, right?
No, F.
No, under F, under that, under that reentry meetings and intervention.
Prior to returning to regular classes, a suspended student and parent and guardian shall meet with the building principal
But that's.
and team. And, and, or, and appropriate team members.
Heather, that is, but then down below, it, it references back up to that paragraph. It, it says in accordance with the description as above. I'll find it for you.
Please, because I am totally lost on this.
I know, I.
I mean, I do, I do have, I have F here for reentry meetings and intervention plans, right? So F goes back to number six, which is out-of-school suspension.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes, but then under expulsion, it references.
I didn't make it up, I literally was reading it, um, that's how I found it. So on page five, C, that first paragraph, it's the second to last line of that first paragraph.
B, C, up right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
The intervention plan as described in paragraph B six F.
Wait, wait a minute, say that one more time for me.
Section C on page five.
Yep.
Five.
The second to last line of that red paragraph. See how it says with the.
Yes, yes, okay.
So that would be, yes, which was very smart, because there's only one spot.
Right. That was probably Brian's.
Suzie has a great suggestion.
Ooh.
Suzie.
Say it again, please?
Suzie, some sort of, just.
Everybody get excited.
So, on F, reentry meeting and intervention plans prior to returning to regular classes.
Oh, where are you, Susan?
This thing.
And parents slash guardian. Shall meet with the building principal and student support team. That is.
I, or designate and student support team, keep and designate, there's, or, yeah.
Yep.
Or.
Okay.
I like that, that makes me feel so much more comfortable.
Okay.
Sorry. I think it is too, uh, it talks to what you're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, then it's just not the print, because it sounds like.
Yeah, thank you, that's really elegant. Um, the only thing I have on here is that it, this is riddled with, it's saying school board instead of board.
What, where, I'm sorry.
Um, like on page three, where it says a field of long-term suspension.
Okay.
This says superintendent of school board, it just says the board, which is does it a couple of different times in there. So there just needs to be like a quick scrub of.
School.
From school out, and, um, even on page four, it says school district, it should just say district.
Yep.
And that should be capitalized. So just one more, like.
So scrub district and school.
Scrub district, scrub school, or, not scrub district, capitalize and, instead of, yeah, capitalize district, scrub school everywhere. Not everywhere, but where it's associated with the different words, sorry.
Nope, that's good, we understand.
There's a, there's a number of them, um, in here.
Well, were we consistent though?
No. No, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's good, especially when we get to these big ones, it's hard to.
Yeah.
Is there a separate process or proceed, I mean, policy, sorry, all the P words, for reentry for a potential victim of something?
That's a different.
That's why, that's why I'm asking.
That's in our, I would say it's more in our protocols.
Protocols, yeah.
Yes, it's in our protocols, and I can think of a couple of different protocols.
Okay, that was my only question, because it talks about reentry of somebody who's been removed, but the other affected party, how, what is, so there are protocols for that, not necessarily.
Absolutely, yes, that has been further clarified even just this year.
Thank you for that.
And I had one question, under temporary reassignment, where it says, and this is on page two, um, number four. Page two, number four, temporary reassignment. This is talking about in-school suspension. You know, the persons, the child will be temporarily isolated from one or more classes while under supervision. A temporary reassignment should not exceed five consecutive school days. My question is, if you do five consecutive school days and then you have a day off, could that be reinstated? I'm just looking at abuse of this.
Say that again.
So, this, this says should not exceed five consecutive school days. The building principal, and that should say a designate, is authorized to issue, issue reassignment restrictions from activities or place a student on probation for repeated failure, so you get five consecutive school days of an in-school suspension.
Yeah.
One day not, and then you're back on five days of in-school suspension. That seems like it's an in-perpetuity thing. Is that accurate or not? That's what it reads like to me, but I want to make sure that it's, that I'm clear on it. Temporary assignment, reassignment should not exceed five consecutive school days.
Right.
But then it says, the building principal is authorized to issue reassignment restrictions for repeated failures. So, does that mean it's five consecutive school days in a school year, five consecutive school days? And then.
Oh, could they get in, inside, I think I'm.
You, we're repeating a process. Five consecutive school days, oh, they're fine for another day, and then they're in five consecutive school days. So you get into a loop of, they're in, they're in a in-school suspension for five consecutive school days, they're off for a day, they end up in an in-school suspension for their five consecutive school days, they're off for a day, they're in suspension for five.
You mean, when you say off for a day, they're back in school?
They're back in school.
Okay, I see, okay, and they may use, I was getting ready on, is it a holiday, is it a?
No, 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 because holidays are not, they would be part of that consecutive portion.
Okay, I get that. Yes, right, exactly, that's what I was, that's what I was going with.
So I'm looking at this and going, I could see an abusive pattern here? So I'm asking, is that the case, or is?
That, I don't believe that's ever been the case, um, but I don't know that I would know every single situation.
Um, it's not, but in practice, it's in here, could this take, take, could this be abused? Is what I'm asking, so is there a limit? Where we would then say, this is happening too much, we need to take alternate action.
And I don't know what that alternate action would be, given the state law, that we can expel except for certain reasons.
Right, right, right. Or is it reassignment to a different district or some, you know.
We have a policy for that.
Okay, so.
Thank you. So there are protections in place to handle what you're describing.
Great, okay, that is really the core of my question, thank you.
That's a really good question, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to, um, motion to accept JICD as amended.
Can I second that?
All in favor?
Um, I, sorry, I hesitated only because I wanted to ask, what about?
Here, I did that one. Yeah, we haven't done JKA yet, so we're coming.
We did J, we.
You voted on JIC, now you're voting on JICD.
We did it individually.
Might as well just.
I guess you're voting individually now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wrote it. You're right, I wasn't supposed to make a motion yet.
It's okay. I just want to make sure that we did.
Well, can you?
That's okay.
Okay, I'm gonna go into JKA now.
Okay, JKA, I'm going to preempt all of this with, um,
Yeah, you're a doctor, tell me more.
A context that, section A, I don't think was there first. Um, be, let me, or, excuse me, section A was there, but we made it more robust, Heather, right? Um, after, um, for JKA.
The policy statement.
What do you, what do you mean?
Meaning, um, hold on, let me, let me re-read what I'm talking about here. I know. So the way this policy was originally written, when we first saw it, was very, um, uh, abrasive to the reader. You can argue that when you read it right now, it's somewhat abrasive in terms of the content. But, um, we tried to be very clear in the policy as it is in front of us now, that, um, this is the reason for the policy. And then, right up front, the only people who are able to do this are folks who will have, uh, training and are required to have this training, um, and that is the reason why, uh, and that's sort of at the top. The way, I, I'm sorry, I guess it was section B that wasn't in there.
Yeah, so, so we had B in like section J.
Yeah, that's.
And so the, the committee said, we need to put this right up front, yeah.
So A and B were sort of the two key anchors to make sure that that's where this is coming from.
And I have no doubt that this policy brought on, like the, uh, comprehensive discussions in the policy committee.
And Dr. Bennett.
I just want to honor the work that is done at that policy committee level.
Oh, no, I think it's, honestly, I thought it was, yeah, great.
Honestly, I, I think that putting B where we as a group decided to be, helped everybody on the group go like this, like, okay, this, while this was a, a distressing conversation, because the topic is very, um, hard to read through. Um, it is important, especially contextualized by Dr. Bennett explaining, and I'm sure Ellen can also contextualize for us, um, that, um, having a policy for how the restraints and seclusion, if needed to be used, are to be used. Um, and I, I guess contextually, I would just say, I am familiar with policies to this, um, topic in the healthcare setting as well, because they are very highly regulated, and the whole goal of any of these policies is to use them the least, you know, to present, uh, a least restrictive environment, and you don't want to use any of these if you don't have to, but if you're going to have to, this is the policy to follow when you're using them.
Right, we go to great lengths to make sure that we are absolutely prioritizing preventative strategies at all times.
Correct.
This is a last resort.
Um, so that's one, and I'm trying to remember, I want to go back before we dive into the meat. Just looking at the introduction, was this a, edit, I think this was updated, the idea was that this would be, um, review, revised to implement changes that were, um, recommended by the School Board Association.
What, so the.
And some laws.
Yeah, so the law was significantly changed in the last few years, um, and now that there was a requirement that districts have a policy with the significant changes within it. Um, and a part of that is to ensure that we're very transparent with families and the staff about what is, what is required or allowed, um, and what's not allowed, actually, probably even more important. Um, and so, so much of this is directly from the legislation requirements.
And that, I think the requirement that the language has to be in there to a certain extent. And to, to the point where some of the, the committee members are recommending removing certain pieces, and Dr. Bennett was explaining to us why that probably can't happen legally. So that was a really helpful dialogue.
Yeah, sure.
I only have a couple of questions, and they're really simple, I'm hoping. Under page three, it says the superintendent, this is under D, the superintendent is authorized to establish procedure for managing the behavior. The question should be really simple, is that superintendent, or is that principal, or is that building, building specific? Or is that superintendent?
So that was in the previous language, and we just didn't touch that? Um, we, we can make it or designate, um, but the superintendent is still responsible per the legislation for this.
Okay, that's, yeah, okay, that's perfectly my question, excellent. And then on page four, section B, the last sentence, an employee trained, that should be and authorized?
In section B.
Section B, page four, restraint periods, it's the last paragraph, last sentence of the first paragraph. It says, an employee trained and authorized?
Authorized, yes.
So that's a misspelling.
Thank you.
And then there's another misspelling, so hold on. Can't find it right now, I'll get back to you. I think there was one of them misspelling, so as soon as I find it, I'll let you know.
You can also email it to me.
Right, because it's more of a typo, again, the stuff doesn't change.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it, it, the intent doesn't change really.
Yeah, I was, I was fine with all, I thought it was really.
Yeah, me too.
Very thorough, which I very much appreciate.
And this is not my bailiwick, so Bobby, I am.
Yeah, I actually defer to you, because I feel very comfortable, the medical professional speaking to this.
The other thing that was really helpful, uh, for, I remember Dr. Bennett explaining, is that sometimes if a student or child has to go to a different,
Out-of-school.
Out-of-school placement, it was, it was important to make sure that the policy followed or was consistent, which was something that we didn't really think about, because we don't see that necessarily every day.
I couldn't find the other misspelling, but I did have a question on page seven, um, second paragraph, so it's, not second paragraph, under D, where it says, the superintendent slash designate shall send by United States Post Service First Class Mail or transmit by electronic means. The question is, should that be an and/or, or an and, or leave it as an or? And I, I'm not advocating for a change, I'm just curious as to.
Is there anything in written-up notice legislation that would, um, say, answer that question?
It doesn't, are you, can we, can we do both?
Yes.
I would, if it was me, if I was a parent.
It's an or.
I would like both.
No, it, it, but it.
Hey, okay.
Legally speaking, it's an or.
It is an or legally?
Yes.
So we should leave it as an or?
Okay.
That's what I read.
All right.
Okay, are we good to move on to the next one?
And we, of course, know that when we are.
And we, of course, know that when we are communicating about this type of situation, any parent, we are over-communicating.
Right.
I would hope so, yeah.
Yes, we're not, let, thinking about what's the least amount of communication we're giving.
Okay. Okay, wellness, nutrition, and physical activity. I had one clarifying question, because our, and this is specific to Newfields, because we do not, I never can remember how to explain lunch, but we're not.
We're not part of the National Police Program.
Right.
Yep.
So.
Federal program.
It's a federal program, thank you. Um, so, one, the, the language around, um, like.
Anything related to USDA?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, so, so here's a question that, that would be very specific, and this could be one that we put off until.
Yeah, and we might want to, because I, I would actually, yeah.
So, so you, you could determine whether or not you wanna follow those practices, but not help be held accountable to them, which is fine.
Yep.
Right? Or you can decide, um, that we want to limit this only to those areas that are required in state law. And there's several of those areas in here. I don't really know how much we would be taking away, because the state law often will replicate the federal law.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, we could, we could do a, a study of that, if you will, um, to see what, what sections we can take out that aren't duplicated in the state law between now and your board meeting and.
So, that, that's what I, that, that would be my recommendation.
On board, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
I would.
That was immediately my, like, whoa.
Be prepared, it might not be that much.
That's okay.
No, that's fine, but I don't, I don't want it to be, I was specifically looking at the pieces when it talks about outside coming in food.
Yeah.
Because we do celebrations and things like that, so that was the specific.
Which is state, there's a lot of state in that, too, but we can, we can, we can clarify that. That's a good question.
Yeah, you were on the same page.
Cool, so let's. So, we're gonna table that one.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna make a motion then to approve, I'm gonna re-do it. J I C as amended, J I C D as amended, J K A A as amended, they were all very small things. And, um, can I get a second?
A second, yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks.
All right, and we'll table J L C F.
Great.
Okay, cool. Go team, go.
Okay.
You wanted us to get through it, we did it. We did pretty darn good, I think.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you so much, Heather.
For one more of your points, just so I can hear the result. Okay. And then, I'm gonna go to the game.
Oh.
Which game?
You're one of my favorite person of all time.
Oh, on TV, is that one of you?
There's a Bruins game, wasn't there?
There's a Bruin game. Um, okay, so, principals report.
Oh, did you wanna?
What about superintendent evaluation?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Security.
Come on.
Sorry. Well, superintendent evaluation committee really is going to be discussed, what I'm reporting out on the goals, and it's going to be addressed, and then also, it's going to be addressed later on in the meeting.
Yeah, we are, gonna address it later on in the meeting. Um, and.
Safety and security.
Sorry, and safety and security, we, I, I, we updated last time, we have not met since. We will meet, or you, Jane will now meet in the fall.
Fall, yeah.
Um, so who, do you tell Esther who's on what committee?
I will tell Sharon, and she tells Esther.
She'll tell Esther and, so, okay.
I will relay, I will relay.
Relay the new, the new people.
Hot off the press tomorrow morning.
Now, isn't there?
All right, I'll be quick.
I'm sorry?
Isn't there a meeting on research?
Safety and security?
I thought they were just talking about that.
I think there is a name, but nonetheless.
Just let me know, and I'll figure it out.
Nonetheless, I'll check for you. Nonetheless, okay.
I'm sure y'all have read my report, so I'll just highlight some. Obviously, our celebrations of learning are one of our favorite ways for our students to showcase their learning. And one thing that we did this year that is new, um, that we would like to continue, is, um, a combination of grades. So, our first graders and third graders combined to do an economics course,
Ooh.
or, um, unit. It was outstanding,
Hmm.
because of the learning that took place between the two. And I said at our last score, school board meeting, and I'll reemphasize it in this. One thing, especially during our student, interviews, first, the student leadership team, that, um, the students definitely are wanting is, um, more cross-section between grades. They want that opportunity. And so, this was a beautiful example of that happening, uh, and it was quite lovely. Uh, our, our CMS admin team and teachers are doing a fantastic job, uh, at really putting a priority on making a smooth transition between, um, um, our fifth grade class, not only at Newfields, but throughout the S A U. One of the things that happened, um, that has happened, um, annually, is that the music department came and performed for the students. Uh, Mr. Kay is doing a beautiful job of introducing the strings and the brass instruments to the students, so that they're more aware of those instruments before they go to CMS, um, and pick an instrument. It's not just because they've seen it, but now they've played it and been really exposed to it. So, kudos to Mr. Kay for, um, always being up for the next challenge. Um, I believe last week, I think it was last week, um,
I don't know what date, it's fine.
We had a faculty Alice training with Rich Kane and the Newfields Police. This is obviously after students have left the building. Uh, we run three different types of drills, um, so that teachers, we can have a table talk discussion afterwards. And, and really, those drills, even though they, um, are none of our favorites to do, um, the conversations that happen afterwards, uh, are really rich. And, um, it's a really productive time. So, um, thank you to Rich Kane and the Newfields Police for being part of that. Uh, we're doing a lot of behind the work with our M T S S, um, and, we're excited about rolling out an even more robust M T S S with our reading specialists, uh, next year, so that we have both, uh, math and reading, um, tier two, uh, after our universal instruction.
An M T S S being of the, of tier support system?
Yep.
Thanks.
So, like our response to intervention, if we know that a student needs an extra boost of six to eight weeks of instruction, we have that opportunity to give them that, um, either a dose, two doses, before we even look at evaluating whether or not they should go to special education. Um, so, we also have done quite a bit of work this year, um, with our literacy, um, it, really focusing, and again, this is an S A Y, S A U-wide, um, deepening our understanding around, um, a science of reading and how we need to change our practices. Um, and one of the, our last P Ds was around the podcast of Sold a Story, if you haven't.
Oh, it's amazing.
Heard it. It is quite outstanding, and it will really give you the arc of, um, what has happened in literacy in the last, uh, forty to sixty years.
Recommend anybody listening to that. It is absolutely eye-opening.
With that, our O G, um, again, I feel like I'm doing an infomercial every, every school board about O G. It is amazing when we do our, we're in our preliminary parts of our I Ready, our third, fourth, and fifth graders have taken the reading section. And, um, though there's an overview of how we're doing, it does break it down into five sections. Two of the sections that are directly related to O G, which is, uh, phonological awareness in our phonics. We are, um, not only on grade level, but across the board, completely green, um, above or, um, on or above grade level. It, it's a really beautiful color to look at. Obviously, my expectation is that that is what we are in everything. Um, and we're, we're working on that. You will definitely hear more and more about, um, our training in that. If you haven't checked out the library, please go down there. It's not quite done, but it's close. Um, we, we need, uh, we still have our browsing bins to be brought in, but, um, those will be lower to the ground, so that they're easier for our younger students, our K through two, to look at. But, um, the library has been completely repainted. The top shelves have come off, so now it's just at student level and Beth level. And, um, outside the library will be the fifth grade gift of a mural of books. Um, and then, yay, I'm so excited, on our left-hand side of the library, it's our research materials, but it will also be our adult conference room, which we need. If you've been to a conference lately, it might be in here, it might be in that room, and just to dedicate a space that adults can go to, um, is very exciting.
It looks very nice. I was just down there.
Thank you. Um, yeah.
Did, um, Jenny, did you want her to go through some of the March principals report as well? I know that that might not be on the agenda, but I think we hit that last time.
Um, she did give us an overview last time, yeah. We, it's okay, yeah.
I didn't think she did.
Cause that was the majority of what we know.
That was the whole meeting.
That was like all.
Everything else was like, check, check, check. Okay, cool.
Cause we met for our ma- basic time.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think we're, I think we're good.
All right, awesome.
Anything else, Suzie?
No, we're gonna close out the year. Great, this has been a fantastic year, it really has. Um, it's been wonderful to have Ellen on board. She's been really involved in, um, our meetings and, and been a fantastic partner. So, it's, it really has been, been a fantastic year.
Awesome.
Agreed.
Um, okay, so, on that note.
Speaking of a fantastic year.
We're gonna report out on the superintendent goals?
Yes, yes. So, this is, this is me, that I can just give a brief summary of this particular document, which was included in the board packet, which is entitled roadmap for action steps. Um, the top, top title is superintendent goals, but just to give you an idea of what I'm referring to. Just a brief overview to let you all know that, you know, as you can see here, there are five goals for the superintendent. And when we thought about how to report out on these goals in a user-friendly way for you all, it really was a collaborative effort with our senior leadership team to go through each of these goals and have, you know, really meaningful conversations about how to document what we've all been doing, and obviously, particularly what the superintendent, Dr. Aspel, has been doing. So, just a few highlights, um, because I know you're going to engage in a further conversation later on this evening. Um, to go through, I'll just give one highlight per goal. So, you know, the vision of a graduate, as you all know, we had the Vision Summit. Where that stands right now is that, um, there were, there was, there were a couple of statements, um, in terms of the modifications to the current vision of the graduate that were, um, developed at the Vision Summit. And then, we, as a senior leadership team, then took those statements and combined them into one very thoughtful, labor-intensive statement that was developed. And we, the superintendent pushed that back out to the community to get some additional feedback. And, um, that will go to the joint board, um, in September, once we have the opportunity to review the additional feedback that came in. So, that's where that stands. In terms of goal number two, around the open and collaborative communication, you know, we've really made an effort as an entire leadership team to attend as many school functions as we can. And, um, to, you know, just be out and about and make sure that we are seen and, and heard, and that, you know, that, that is inclusive of, um, our work within, um, engaging in our, with our community partners as well, in addition to, obviously, the feedback sessions that Dr. Aspel has been hosting. So, we feel as though that, you know, we've spent a lot of effort to demonstrate how that goal is being accomplished. Um, then on to goal number three, you know, the strategic plan work, that's pretty self-evident in terms of what is listed here. And just knowing that, you know, we have developed the timeline for that, and that it's all a work in progress, and that, you know, we are, we've had it on the horizon and have engaged in frequent conversation about that, in terms of next steps. Then, goal number four, around building leadership capacity. Um, this speaks to what Suzie was just talking about with regards to, um, the multi-tiered systems of support, and making sure that we're engaging in presentations for our boards on that, and helping everybody throughout S A U sixteen to really understand what we mean when we're talking about multi-tiered systems of support, both in terms of B L C O, both in terms of, and, um, both A and B, the A stands for academics, the D stands for behavior. So, again, we have, we have been having a wide variety of conversations throughout the community when it comes to M T S S, helping everybody to have a shared understanding of what we mean when we say this, and where, where we're going, what is the why behind multi-tiered systems of support? So, that's one example for goal number four. And then, lastly, goal number five, um, you know, uh, po- policy structures and strategies to foster cultural competency that's about full. Um, I can speak specifically to what we've been doing with regards to that, um, in terms of this, um, our, um, implementation of our anti-discrimination and bias protocols, um, which, when we were, when we were having a conversation this evening around the policy and how we protect students that are on the receiving end of behavior or discrimination, that is, when I said, oh, I can get to that later as well, that's what I meant, because this is a, is a really great example of that work. And the heavy lifting that all of us have done, um, as far as principals and all the administrators, administrators in S A U sixteen, in addition to senior leadership team, around really looking at anti-discrimination and anti-bias, and making sure that our students are supported, and that, you know, we are continuing to prioritize that. That is just a brief overview.
That was a really good summary.
Well, thank you.
I was like reading along with you. That was, that was impressive.
Okay, and then, just to let, to let you folks know, later on this evening, there is a document here, like, like you could have taken some additional notes right now, um, but then, this is, this document in your packet is,
This is the.
what you'll hand in to Allison tomorrow, and in this part, you can take additional notes. I could have set that prior to.
That's okay.
Yes, Heather?
If, if it's helpful, that, that one that she, that Ellen just pointed out,
Mm-hmm.
um, the one that's, uh, superintendent annual goals at the top of it, that's what you're gonna fill out to email to Allison, kind of by ten tomorrow.
Got it.
And then, the evaluation team works on part three.
Got it.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
For that, sorry.
And then, by taking all the board.
Got it, too. Yeah, okay.
And you should have that in a Word doc, hopefully, to be able to just fill it.
Okay. Didn't it come from you prior to?
I'm gonna send it to you right now, so you have.
Thank you for that.
Please resend it, just in case we don't have it. I think we do from prior, previously from Tampa, canceling our.
Hey, academic, the academic calendar was included.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Was included in the packet. Um, and.
Sure.
Uh, but there have been some changes.
Oh.
Do you wanna highlight?
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So.
Oh, before Suzie could start on that, I just wanted to give you the preface that, as a reminder, this was reviewed by the joint board as well, in terms of the overall calendar.
How are we with days?
Synchronizing with the middle school and.
We're doing very well.
Okay.
Yep.
I know that was a big topic there.
It is.
Absolutely, yes. We have come quite a ways.
Yep. Um, the, just the changes, I'll just highlight those. So, in April, we're doing two half-days, uh, for our student life conferences.
That's indicated by the triangle.
Right, and, um, half-days, because we, uh, release it twelve forty, they still count as student days. And then, the last one is on June twelfth, that, um, is a half-day, which is the last day of school.
So, those are the only changes, as this compares to the school calendar that was sent in the packet. Oh, with the exception of also, um, the total days at the bottom is included in this modified version.
Hmm.
Just to make that especially clear, that it's in, it's in alignment with the collective bargaining agreement, that the teachers have one hundred eighty-six days.
Suzie, I just have a question. Um, my Thursdays are no longer the same as they were. They're, uh, it used to be Thursdays are like the hardest day of my life.
Sure.
Um, but just putting myself back in that position, is there any particular reason, I'm sure there is, that the, um, the student life conference half-days are two Thursdays in a row, as opposed to either two back-to-back days or two different days of a week? Is it just an easier day for us to schedule for school?
Historically, this is how it's been done.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm going off of that. Um, I do know that we try not to make it on a Monday or Friday, because then it defeats the purpose, people leave.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I will say that on both weeks, the teachers are incredibly accommodating for people who aren't able to go to a Thursday meeting before after-school conferences are offered.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just thinking more about the, um, the half-day in childcare and stuff.
Sure.
But, but is that how it was this year? I don't even remember, because it's.
It was a full day this year.
It was one full day, okay.
But we still only have, we have two half-days, and then, the last day is a half-day, but not, okay.
And this is how we've historically done it.
Okay.
Prior this year.
I'm not suggesting we change, I was just curious if there's. Yeah, I'm not suggesting we change, I was just curious if there's, thank you.
Of course.
And, um, and the, the teachers are, are coming back a day, we discussed this, they're, they're gonna come back a day earlier than nor, than, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so they're here those first.
For the CVA.
That's, yeah, exactly, per the CVA, that's gonna be fantastic, to get everything ready.
How many snow days are included in, how many proper snow days are in?
None.
So, when you're called a snow day, it's a remote day now?
Two snow days, Esther will do.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, you're right, no, go ahead, you're good, you'll say it better than me.
The superintendent has two days that she will call as just a, a snow day, and those would have to be made up at the end of the year, as in added on to the last day of school, the last day of school's shift. After those two snow days, traditional type days, have been called during the season, if a third has to be called, it will be a remote day.
Okay, that was my question, so, any, sorry, any snow day that is called will extend the school year by a day. So then it wouldn't be the twelfth, that's a half a day, it would be the thirteenth, that would be a half a day, or the following Monday.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And that's not, um, driven by policy, it's, it's, so, it could change. The superintendent puts that out at the, you know, in the fall, to clarify, just to, just to make it especially clear, that, that, that's a practice.
Okay.
So.
Although I have to, that was very helpful last year to have that, um.
Expectation.
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 Clarified, yes, I, I agree, so she'll, I'm sure she will do that again.
Okay, so, we need to make a motion to approve this, okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this calendar as is.
I'll second you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, calendar, done, I'm gonna put that right here.
That two weeks at May is, man? It doesn't look like two weeks, cause it's two different months, but it is.
I'm excited.
I am.
You're gonna wanna kill them.
Anxious, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure what to feel, I'm excited to.
That'll be really nice, so.
Okay, so then we have.
The reading specialist.
Those reading specialists new hire.
Yes, that, the interviews were conducted, and the team, um, had input, and they're, the finalist, we have a finalist, so we just need you folks to make the nomination to hire this.
Okay, so.
Melissa Toby.
Yes, so I'm going to make a motion to, um, offer, right?
Nominate.
Nominate Melissa Toby as our new reading specialist.
I'll second that.
Oh.
Hardly.
My goodness, yes.
All in favor?
Aye, hundred percent.
Yes, 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 yes.
I did not heard that.
I had not either, when you started writing, I'm like, what, oh, hey.
That makes me really happy, then, I'm just gonna quiet until this meeting.
Like, truly.
I am shocked too.
I am really proud.
You guys are really.
People held that confidence, yeah.
You are really good at keeping that.
Also, I'm thrilled, like, that's, we're, we're still public, right? I didn't realize that was something that we can do, I'm very glad. I'm happy, as I trust, well, it's great, yay, yay.
I'm very excited, very excited. Yay!
Cool.
Um, okay, so, old business, just very briefly, because we're gonna be talking, we're gonna be going into non-public, but, um, briefly, on the school safety project, we are going to be having a, um, workshop for the community on May twenty-ninth from six-thirty to seven-thirty.
Six-thirty to eight-thirty?
Six-thirty to eight-thirty?
When did you say your name, sorry?
May twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Here.
Six-thirty to seven-thirty.
Six-thirty to seven-thirty, may run long, who knows, but the, an hour would be lovely, um, to get some input and have some conversations with the town, with anybody who wants to come. Um, we are also working with Susie to engage the staff on the project, um, and, uh, we will go into more detail with that as it, as it kind of unfolds, but the next big piece is to, um, have a, prior to school ending, um, the May twenty-ninth meeting.
Six, six, or six-thirty?
Six-thirty, six-thirty.
I'm gonna put that in the newsletter for this.
Thank you, um, and it will be here.
Jenny, I, um, I might have missed it, is it a actual board meeting, or is it a meeting? Um, I won't be able to make it, it's the CMS six-grade concert.
As long as you're okay.
Yeah, oh yeah, I just wanted to be there.
Yep, no, that's fine, we, um, I, I, I will, I will be there, um, with Chris and Ellen and.
Yes.
Um, but we'll have all the info, information we have so far.
Great.
Um, we'll give an overview of the project, where we're at so far, um, and, yeah, that's.
So we wanna call that officially a community forum, or what is the title that you would like to?
School and Safety Project Forums?
School and Safety Project, um.
Community Input?
Community Input, even.
Session?
Session?
The Input Session.
Session, yes, Community Input.
It's helpful.
Stop with some fun acronym.
If you can make it sound better, Susie, by all means.
I'm okay with it.
Let me put that into AI.
Actually, that's a perfect.
Put that in the chat and, la, 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 la. Um, okay, so, uh, I just wanna, oh, a vision summit.
I already spoke.
You already spoke about that, okay?
Spoke about that, and then when I reported out the superintendent goals.
Okay, so then, and our next meeting is June sixth, um, and then, uh, it, does anybody have anything else before I, we go into non-public?
Can I ask one more clarifying question?
Yes, absolutely.
Would you like that to be here or in the?
I think the multipurpose room, if possible, is it possible?
Of course it is.
Is it open?
I'll have to check, but I'm assuming it would be open for you.
Are you thinking because of, of volume of people?
Space, yeah, I just don't even have any clue as to how many people to expect.
My only, I'm not gonna be there, but.
I would love to, if we could record it, if possible, is that something?
Oh, I.
Are the, the forum.
Okay.
And would it be possible for, um, us to have it recorded?
You would check into that.
Could you, would you mind checking into it?
No, let's, no.
Jenny, I'm, I'm not gonna be at the May thing, but, uh, I, I love that we're hopeful that a hundred, two hundred, three hundred people are gonna be here, but if there's not a ton, I just, the acoustics in the multipurpose room are not the best, so I'm just.
So, I would be okay having it here, um, in here, if we could, if, I mean, I'm fine to squish in here, I don't, i- if, if we feel, if we think there's gonna be, I don't, I have no idea honestly, how many people.
Not sure either, because we haven't done it before.
We haven't done it before.
Another cleared space, and the acoustics are better than the gym, would be the atrium right outside the gym, and you could have, you know, the.
Oh, yeah.
Chairs set up.
Okay. That might be even better, that might be better.
That way, if more people come, you can extend the seating, you can kind of manipulate versus classrooms, you have a limited amount of space. And I do agree with Bobby that the multipurpose room is really, really hard, when, especially when the issue comes on, you really, you can't hear. It just, it, it's not an intimate setting.
Right. Oh, I mean, we could even just kind of rearrange this to just give more seating, if possible, I don't know, I don't.
Just let me know before Friday, cause it's in my newsletter.
Okay.
And I know I have it in the gym.
Well, if we do it in the atrium area anyway, they'd come in through the, the multipurpose room anyway, right, so they would come in to there.
I'll put gym questions in.
Yeah, why don't we plan on that?
Plan on the multipurpose room?
Well, the, like, right outside, in the, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We can fit more seats, but it's not as, yeah, I like that idea, okay, cool, okay.
And before we move on.
Yep.
I cannot make the twenty-ninth, that's not something that I can do, but I would like to be able to get more information on the school safety project at some point, so, if there's time maybe at the next board meeting to go through that and get a little brief overview of it, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, okay, so, we are going to go into non-public session in accordance with, oh, I never say these right. A, three, two, A, C, and I.
I second, can I, do I have to do that? Yeah.
Yes.
I'll say R.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay, so I am going to motion to adjourn the meeting at, we're gonna, oh wait.
We have to go.
Go to non-public first.
We have to come out of non-public at ten oh one PM.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will motion to close our meeting at ten oh one PM.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.